Well, good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock. I'm going to call the September 3rd council meeting to order. Will you please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we do roll call, I had a call earlier from Councilman Burns. He's asked to be excused for tonight and possibly next Wednesday. There has been a death in the family and he gave me permission to say that. I was just going to excuse him, but he asked that I share that, so. Moving on to roll call, Councilwoman Lloyd.
Here.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilwoman Henderson.
Here.
Councilwoman Cock.
Here.
And Councilwoman Lavaca.
Present.
All right, perfect. All right. We do not have any special guests. Let's do an approval of the agenda. That's usually something that we do with every meeting. Tonight, we are looking at new business. We have three items. Do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilman Henderson, second by Councilman Cock. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, so, no guests or presentations or unfinished business, so we will hop right into new business. The first item tonight is business license endorsement, the property rental discussion. And this is a motion to bring an ordinance to council revising the business license endorsement of the municipal code. And that's to include property rental section, noting that only one business license is required for the owners with more than one property rental within the city limits, and a resolution updating the master fee schedule for endorsement fee amounts associated with the number of those units in city limits. Once this is approved, the first read of that ordinance will come back to you next Wednesday, September 10th, with the second one on September 24th. So, with that, I'm going to ask our Finance Director, Kelly Conken, to lead us through this process.
Good evening, council. So, as the mayor said, we're bringing back some business license endorsement sections or discussion specifically regarding the property rentals. When we went to implement the new code, we came across some questions. So, the municipal code states that doing business includes owning, renting, leasing property. So, this includes somebody who has a rental property and is renting it out to someone else that is considered doing business. The code also says that if a business is transacted by a person at two or more separate locations within the city, that they need a separate business license for both of those locations. That makes it, you know, that's easy to follow for something like, you know, if a restaurant had two locations within city limits, they would need to go through the business license process twice, you know, life and safety checks at both locations. It makes it a little bit more challenging when we're talking about rental properties. So, we just propose creating a separate section in the business license endorsement municipal code that specifically outlines these things. It seems to make the most sense that if you own more than one rental property in city limits, that you would still only need one business license endorsement from the city of Cedar Woolley. But we may want to just consider whether, you know, what type of fee should someone who owns rental property would pay? So, we just included like a couple of questions on there. You know, should all quantities and types of real property rentals pay the same annual $35 business license endorsement fee? Should an owner of a duplex living in one half and renting out the other pay the same business license endorsement fee as someone who has an 80 apartment complex? So, just trying to set up a system for specific for property rentals for these endorsement fees. And then, if we're not going to have these two things pay the same fee, how should we base that fee? Should we have a structure? We gave a little table down here of, you know, one rental unit, you pay the traditional, you pay the general $35. We have two to five units, six to 10, and then more than 11. This is just an example fee structure. And then, also wanted the council to consider whether we did want to make any exemptions. I know last time, we briefly talked about that we didn't see a lot of exemptions in other cities' codes, but just want to give council an opportunity to, if we wanted to discuss that further, you know, if someone has one rental property, or if they, you know, if they live in a duplex and they live in one side of the duplex, do we want to make an exemption for the other side? These are all things that we don't specifically outline in the current code that we would like to get addressed in an added section. And then, the other thing to note is when we change the fee structure, we have to do that with the state as our business licenses goes through the state portal. And that next opportunity for that is October, the deadline is October 1st. So, if you would like to make changes, we could bring a draft ordinance to the next council meeting, and then, we could also discuss it a second time at the September 24th meeting as well and still meet that state deadline.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilwoman Lavaca.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much, Kelly. I appreciate you putting this together. I was wondering, so, right now, we just have a set fee of 35 per unit?
We haven't, most renters, most people who own property and rent it out do not have a business license. So, we made that clear in the last update of the code that someone who owns property and rents it out is doing business, so they would require a business license. And then, that section of the code says if you're transacting business in two or more locations, you need a business license for each. So, when we went to implement that, if you strictly read it, it means you need a separate business license for each physical property that you rent.
So, up until recently, a lot of the people that just had rentals around here, they didn't have any business license or any fee. They just went about their business. So, I guess, are we going to fill the council up with a bunch of homeowners that are all upset, all of a sudden, now that they're finding out they need business licenses and they're getting charged fees for it? And the fee is relatively small, but have we, how do we know? And are we reached out to them? Is this something that, how did this work out? Because I don't remember that part of it. Like, I don't remember us changing the rental to a business license.
Yeah, we brought back the, the question was, should we make an, one of the ways we brought this up was, should we make any exemption or should all rental properties be considered doing businesses? And doing business in Cedar Woolley limits, and should we make any exemptions? So, the answer that was, that council came to was no exemptions. So, when we went to implement that, we came across these questions. So, we haven't done any outreach to individuals who rent properties because we wanted to make sure that we weren't overcharging anybody if that was not our true intent for business licenses.
Yeah, that does seem like it's, that would, without any notification, how do we know how many people are renting? And then, how do they know that they're in violation of municipal code? I think that we may want to rethink that a little bit for, right now, just to make sure that we properly got them engaged and notified them versus changing the code. I know it's changed, but there's a way to put that in right now.
We do have a way to identify, to identify a large number of people who own the property but rent it out just through our utility billing process. So, through utility billing, we have both the owner and the renters' information if the renter is paying the bill. So, we do have some of that information. But just like anything, we're not going to be able to identify every single person who is doing business in Cedar Woolley and reach out to them to ensure that they've gone through the state to apply for their business license endorsement.
Yeah, no doubt. It just seems like through the utility bills, all of a sudden, you, you get a notification that says, hey, you own a business, you need to get a business license, and you need to do this.
They don't necessarily, like, own a business, but that they, but they are doing business in Cedar Woolley and are required to have the Cedar Woolley business, go through the state and have the Cedar Woolley business license endorsement.
Are we able to re-discuss that with the council? I'd put a motion forward to just re-discuss that topic itself. Even right now, I'll put a motion forward so that we don't implement something that comes back to just impose on all the renters around our community without them notifying. So, if you guys want to maybe second that, then we can go ahead and have a discussion on that. If not, then that works.
I mean, part of that is this discussion tonight, if I'm not mistaken, Mayor.
Yeah, we're not making any motions tonight. I mean, you could make a motion to do that, but we're not going to pass anything tonight. Yeah. And good points that you're bringing up. So, we certainly want to be able to stay thoughtful about notifying people. Yeah. Councilman Cock?
Yes, again, Kelly, thanks for your good work on this. It's a complicated topic. In terms of exemptions, where my sort of mind and heart goes is, for example, maybe a senior living and rents out a, you know, mother-in-law, or rents out the other side of the duplex, or somebody who's disabled. I know that they could get a, you know, some help through the county for that. I can't remember what it's called. But, you know, it'd be nice to, you know, I just don't like the idea, and I agree with Councilman Lavaca, that suddenly, well, now you owe us 35 bucks, especially for people who are really struggling. I mean, that's, every dollar counts. The other thought I had was, if you do it, one blanket business license for somebody who may have a ton of stuff or not, is there the possibility for somebody to fudge the numbers or to try to avoid it?
I mean, that is always a possibility. I mean, part of it is that we know who owns the property, you know. If we said, if we do it by, like, unit, you know, one of the questions here is by rentable unit. So, you know, if you have an apartment complex that, and I don't know how many apartments are generally in a complex, but if it's 50 apartments in an apartment complex, you know, should that, should the owner of that apartment complex who's doing business in Cedar Woolley, should, you know, should they pay the same fee as someone who owns two, owns a duplex and rents it out, or owns two single-family homes and rents them out?
Yeah.
That's, that's part of the question, too, where we're trying to think about ways we could implement it across the board. You know, we wouldn't have to ask ourselves which, you know, where does this fall? But also, just to be fair, you know, someone who has a big apartment complex does take more work for the city to ensure that they're in compliance with all the requirements than one single-family home, so.
Yeah, just to follow up, the, is this, is this approach comparable to what our neighboring cities are doing?
Yeah, when we looked at it last time and didn't make any exceptions for it last time, we didn't really see anything in other cities, strictly outlined in other cities' municipal codes. So, I'm not sure if they're making some internal decisions and have internal policies regard, regarding those. I'm not sure about that, but a lot of the places we looked at didn't have anything specifically outlined in their code regarding rental facilities, rental properties.
And in fairness, you know, to the larger apartment operators, although the renters don't pay property taxes, the owners do, and to some extent, pass along the costs of that, those property tax to the renters in the form of rent. You know, I have more sympathy for, for the smaller, the folks with, you know, this duplex, one or two duplex, or a mother-in-law house next door, and I'd like to go easy on them. I think there should be some sort of business license for, based on the size, but it shouldn't be owners. You know, I, I don't think we should put a lot of red tape and fees in front of government, in front of private industry.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Henderson?
Thank you. So, I'm kind of hearing a common theme of needing to essentially differentiate between, like, what a private landlord would be, like, somebody who's renting out one or two homes in a, in a commercial operation, like, you know, there's plenty of apartments around town. Just pick one and name it. So, as far as exemptions go, I mean, I think it'd be, policy-wise, it'd probably be prudent of us to say if you're renting out an ADU on your property, or we allow to as a city, right? And if you're living on that same property and you're renting both of those out, that could be thought of as something that we could consider an exemption. But as far as the, as far as the cost associated with it, I know apartments are much larger and they make a whole lot more money than, than if you're just renting out a house, you know, down the street that you happen to own, but their overhead is also extremely massive. They have all the insurances they have to pay. They have, and, you know, they're, they're essentially on a shoestring budget a lot of the time, especially in like their first five to 10 years after they, after they develop. And they're providing a lot of housing to the people that wouldn't otherwise have housing here. So, as far as charging them extra for an annual endorsement fee, I'd like to just see it be, you know, the 35 bucks straight across, you know, it's equal for everyone. The, the risk of being a private renter with, you know, a private home that you're renting is relatively low. And your profit margins are about the same scaled, right? So, I, I don't really see a reason to differentiate between the two if we were to have the, the fee applied to a private homeowner renting a place.
Okay. Councilwoman Diamond?
Oh, how is all of this going to be code enforced?
Similarly to how all of our other business license is, which is really just notification to the business owner or the person doing, doing business that they haven't met the requirement. We don't currently have a process in place for, like, our code enforcement officer to go-
Knock on somebody's door and say, hey, you have an ADU, so you need to get a license?
It's just like phone and email. At this time, we would like to implement a better process in general for business licenses so that, you know, we can send someone out to say, you need to have your, you need to go through the state and have your, and then have your Cedar Woolley endorsement. But right now, it is just contact with the individuals.
And then, in regards to the discussion that's been had up here by some of the council members, I'm, I'm struggling with the whole requiring them to have a business license with, I mean, if you live on the premises and you have an ADU in your backyard, the majority of people that are doing that are renting it out to their mother or their kid that's coming out of college or high school or whatever the case might be. And a lot of times, they're not making any money. They're just, if they're paying anything at all, it's subsidizing maybe part of the mortgage or something. I'm not sure what, you know, obviously, everybody has different situations and stuff, but with the push that we've continually had on having this housing, I feel like some of these people that are doing this, doing some of this stuff on their private property aren't looking at it as a business deal or a business that they're trying to create and, you know, become wealthy off of. I feel like they're doing it because they're simply trying to house their family member or somebody, you know, somebody in the community or maybe offset their, their cost of living just slightly because, you know, maybe they're, they moved back to the ADU and they've let a family come into the house, whether it be, you know, family, friend, whatever their situation is. And so, I actually struggle with calling, calling people out that have one unit on their premises, an actual business. They're not necessarily conducting business or providing a service.
And I would recommend not making an exemption, and I know this wasn't exactly what you were saying, for like who's renting it out. You know, you wouldn't want to say like, well, if it's your friend or family member or something like that. But we definitely can put into code what qualifies as doing business in the city. So, if we say that, you know, like Councilmember Henderson mentioned, you know, if you live on the property and you're, you live on the property and you're renting it out, that is not considered doing business. You could make that statement in the code and other similar items in the code to very clearly specify when you're renting property, what is and is not considered doing business in Cedar Woolley.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, there are people that have set up businesses, right? They have their LLCs and that manage their rentals. And so, there are specific businesses that do that. And most people that are in that position are doing that to protect themselves, their individual, from assets. So, that would be, in fact, conducting business. But when you're looking at, you know, and an apartment complex is generally managed by a management group of some sort. They've got somebody hired to manage them and to take care of them. So, they're, of course, conducting business. I, I just don't think that the ADU, you know, the one ADU or the one duplex next door if they're living in it is something that we should be considered doing business. But that would be up to the whole council to decide as a whole.
All right. Councilwoman Lloyd?
Did you try to estimate how many rentals did you thought Cedar Woolley had?
We did not get that far.
I don't blame you.
There's a lot, though. There is a lot.
What does, what brought, what brought this on? What is, what's the advantage of the city of doing this?
Of having the rental properties be-
The business license for rentals, yeah.
Really just knowing what business is being, you know, if council considers it doing business, just knowing what businesses are in the city of Cedar Woolley, and if we need to do any checks on properties, any health and safety checks, that, that is what would trigger it, is the business license process. Other than just driving around and seeing, you know, an unsafe property, that we would go through the process. So, if we found, you know, a rental property, you know, someone is renting out eight properties on a, you know, a small lot, it may trigger building and planning to do additional safety checks in that area.
Is there a chance this could be more work than it's worth?
More work than the money we bring in? Is that your question?
Well, we can say with that, but.
It, business licenses doesn't, like, bring in enough money into the city to, like, hire, to pay for our, you know, a staff member to do all the work. We, we put out more staff energy probably than we bring in in business licenses right now.
Thank you.
So, I just, I just kind of want to recap because there's been some really great thoughts put out here. The first one is the notification to citizens and rentals. How do we go about doing that in a manner that's respectful and not demonstrative? The second thing that I heard was the exemptions. One was an exemption just for ADUs. The other was that we differentiate between the commercial operation and the mom and pop as far as exemption, the mom and pop being exempted, the commercial not being exempted. The third is the apartments that they go straight, we go straight across the board with fees to $35. And the fourth is listing in the ordinance exactly what we're going to be putting the property tax on. So, for example, living on the property with an ADU would not be considered a rental or doing business. So, differentiating between what is, what is business and what's not business. So, that's what I've heard. Have I missed anything?
If I'm- One thing, in addition to ADUs on the property that you live on, I would expand that a little bit to include like mother-in-law apartments.
Okay.
Live in a duplex, triplex, that kind of thing. I know they're making some money on the duplex and the ADUs, but I would like to be, you know, I think we need to help our families. And Councilwoman Diamond is right. It's, most of these are families. And we, one of our kids, you know, he lives in San Francisco. He checked out the rents here, and he said they're not much better than San Francisco, if you can believe it.
I do believe it.
Yeah, no doubt.
Councilman Lavaca?
Yeah, it's so, I am in favor of seeing the apartments. I think they're already developing a business license to be an apartment anyways, and they're, they are paying impact fees and stuff like that. So, I'm thinking like, you know, one person with one rent or two rentals as a supplementary. A lot of people, they retire, and then all of a sudden, they're having to get a business license. So, it's not the 35 or even the 200, $200 for, hey, I got 70 units, I'm paying $200. It's not a huge amount. But it is that whole like, wait a second, I need a business license? I'm 70 years old with two rental houses, and now I've got to go figure out how to do a business license and be a business owner? I mean, that's where I'm coming to like, hey, maybe we need to make this, tighten it up to maybe two, two properties. You have two, two properties or something like that. And if you're living on site, now, people can live at their apartment unit, and all of a sudden, they're exempt, right? So, just a way to figure that out. So, we're not, you know, creating a lot of excess stress on how to do a business license. Because that's where I think that, if I was told I had to go get a business license or 35 bucks, I'd have 35 bucks. Here's this, but how do I do a business license? I gotta research all this stuff and more stress, so.
Kelly, what can we help you with here? There's ideas out here. Is it enough? Is it not enough?
I think that's enough. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else somebody feels you really want to share? Okay. All right. With that then, okay, we will move on. The second item is special events. The second item is, uh, special events. And this will be a, um, motion to bring an ordinance to council revising the threshold requiring special event permit on public property from fifty people to more than a hundred people and to provide clarification as noted below. So, um, under the background summary information. Uh, Kelly will walk us through this, including the, um, potential code revision. So Kelly?
Um, so we have broken up the special event topics into two items tonight. Um, the first one is, as the mayor said, the threshold for special events. Um, and then the second one is funding for special events. Um, so we can take them one at a time as the, as the council pleases. But, um, so a- as noted, we updated the, uh, special events section of the municipal code. I think it was back in, um, March, oh yes, March. Um, and we included thresholds for what needs a special events permit. Uh, one threshold for public property or in the public right-of-way. And that it was gatherings of fifty or more people. And then for private events, it was two hundred and fifty people. When, uh, we went to, again, when we went to implement this, we, some questions arose, specifically around the, the public event of fifty people or more, that that, um, amount seemed low, uh, to, whenever we thought about this in other contexts. So, um, when you rent, when someone, um, requests to rent the large picnic shelter at Riverfront Park, that shelter holds, uh, has a capacity of a hundred people. That we didn't see a lot of benefit to the city for requiring someone to go through the rental approval process and submit a special events application. So our recommendation would be to increase the public threshold to more than one hundred and add in some other language to clarify things that don't, um, need a special events permit. So we have some revised language, um, including that a special event permit is not required for approved park and facility reservations at the community center and the athletic fields that if we've already given approval, we've already gone through a lot of that process. But that, uh, facility capacity requirements, um, do still apply. And that special event permits are still required for rental of the amphitheater at Riverfront Park. And then we also recommend, um, some additional language about private events that, um, a special event permit is not required on private property for established businesses. Having or hosting events as part of their normal course of business. So regardless of the number of people, so if you're, you know, if, if the hotel here has a conference room, I'm not, I'm not sure if it does, but if it has a conference room and they're, um, you know, holding a, a large business conference there or a business having a holiday sale, sale or a wedding event venue, that this is part of their business, um, we wouldn't require a special events permit. But if you're going to have, um, a three-hundred-person wedding at your home, um, that you then would be required to have a special events, um, permit for that because it would be over the two-fifty. So just wanted to get councils', um, thoughts on those revisions.
I'll start here with, uh, Councilman Henderson.
Thank you. Okay, um, so I, I'm glad this came back. Uh, I had a lot of people complaining about the fifty thing to me. Um, so, uh, and then it, if it's over a hundred people for like any of our venues, like the, the shelter down there is a hundred-person, uh, occupancy limit. I don't know exactly what the community center is. I'm sure it's more than a hundred. So if, if we, and it does look like we have the language in here where it says that, um, that, uh, facility capacity limits do apply. So if it's not to exceed that capacity limit anyways because it can't, then they, like, let's say, let's just say a community center's a hundred and fifty. Just then, um, then that, leaving that language of a hundred in there means if, well, you can have a hundred, but if you have a hundred and fifty, which you're at capacity now, then you need to do a special event permit. I think we should just.
Yeah, we, we did include, um, in the draft revision that you do not need a special event permit, um, if you have a community center reservation.
Okay, and then, um, like, any of the other, uh, park shelters that we have anywhere else, those are all going to have their own capacity limit?
Um, Nathan can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the larg- largest capacity of a shelter, not the community, not in considering the community center, but the largest capacity of our, one of our rentable shelters is the large shelter at a hundred. Nathan is nodding yes.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Oh, wait, I had one more thing, if I could. I also had a lot of people that were asking about the thirty-day for, um, that doesn't, that, that only includes a special event permit. Is that correct? For having to submit everything thirty days before? Cause I had people like, well, what if we have a funeral and we need to rent, you know, the community center and it's available next Saturday and no one else is renting it? Do we really need to wait those thirty days?
Thirty days is for the special events permit. Um, we do have, um, is it seven days, uh, ahead of time to reserve the community center? Typically just because, um, you know, if, if they have alcohol or different things, they need a facility monitor. We have to have s- staff to do that. Um, but if it's available and they're not going to need a staff person, we don't require thirty days notice or even seven days notice. But the thirty days is specific to special events need to be, um, you need to apply thirty days ahead of your event.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Councilman Cock?
Uh, yes. First of all, thank you for including the, uh, exemption, uh, for weddings. I, you know, on Fruitdale, uh, next to, I believe it's there in the county or it could be in the city, next to our, my ward is a wedding venue. And I certainly think they should be, you know, exempted from the number thing, so I appreciate that. My question is if somebody doesn't get a special use permit and they pretty flagrantly violate it, what happens?
That may be a question for that side of the table.
I'm, I'm thinking of parties, like you, you have just enormous party and, you know, the neighbors aren't too happy.
I actually don't know. Um, if you, if you're talking about a private property and it's a nuisance, a loud party, that kind of thing, we can probably deal with it a different way. Uh, but, uh, we, we did have one, uh, instance last year where there was an event, uh, that was not a special event, but probably met that, uh, realm. Um, and we just, uh, dealt with it.
Okay.
And, uh, let it happen.
All right, thanks to you.
Okay, go ahead. Councilman Lot- Councilman Labaka?
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I'm in favor of the hundred for sure. In fact, I just had, um, one of the constituents in my ward, uh, talk to me about, is there, she's actually, um, was on the council at one time. But she was like saying, hey, these people had a party right next to my house and they had like well over a hundred and fifty people there, over a hundred people there. And then she cited the thing and I was like, well, I was actually the person who proposed that two-fifty limit. Uh, but she said they had like a full band and they got really loud. And so I said, well, all you'd have to do is just do the sound ordinance at, at nine. I believe the sound ordinance is nine, right? And so, uh, according to municipal code, they have to bring down the noise level by nine o'clock. So it's not a disturbance and that's what the tools the police force could use in that case. So, yeah, if somebody wants to have a get-together or wedding, whatever at their house, yeah, it's totally fine. And even if they're playing some music, as long as they're not, um, you know, uh, going outside of what parameters we already have. So I thought that was, uh, interesting, but that's kind of goes to your point too. As far as tools that we can use is going to be basically that sound ordinance.
Anyone else? Are you okay with the, uh, potential code revision? Does that work for everyone?
That's only the really change we're facing here, right, is the hundred?
That's true.
Okay.
Um, and then the, um, not requiring a special event permit for community center, athletic field and private, um, private, uh, business where it's, it's part of your business.
Thank you, Kelly. All right. That's very true. All right, looks like we're good to go? Yes? Okay. Moving on then to, uh, the last item of the night, which, um, is a discussion only regarding staffing costs for special events. And, uh, Kelly, um, again, um, you're a brave soul tonight.
All right, so this is the second part of the, uh, special events, um, discussion. So, um, uh, we previously passed an ordinance that, um, rewrote the special events section of the municipal code. Um, but previous to that rewrite was included in the code. Um, basically that we would charge for our, um, our services, um, for special events. That provision of the code had never truly been implemented. Um, so when the city went to implement that section, um, of the code, um, we notified the, the community of that and noted that it would take effect, um, October first of twenty-twenty-five. So we're just back to have further discussions specifically about the city costs associated with special events. Also wanted to just include some background information. I know when it was last discussed, we talked a lot about the lodging tax, how lodging tax could be utilized to cover some of these costs. Um, so included in the packet is just some basic information about, um, the, what lodging tax is available for. Uh, lodging tax is also known as hotel motel tax or the bed tax and its fees levied on short-term rentals, um, of hotels, motels and other lo- lo- lodging establishments such as Airbnbs. And it, um, those funds need to be used for tourism promotion, acquisition of tourism-related facilities and operations, um, of tourism facilities or activities. So we reached, or I guess, um, Kristin Kelts from the Skagit Tourism presented to council and talked a little bit about the uses of, um, of lodging tax. So we reached out to her to ask, specifically to ask, um, can the city apply and receive lodging tax for an event that we are not hosting ourselves, but an event that another organization, um, is hosting? So we've included her response as well. And one, one of the parts, it, it wasn't quite a yes or no answer. That even in public safety services during event, lodging tax funds may only be used if specifically tied to tourism promotion. And she said, for example, paying for extra police presence during a tourism event. But in such cases, the cost must be included in the, the event promotion budget and be clearly documented. So, um, it wasn't really a, um, it's, it's not really clear, um, in state law if the city can apply. We also wanted just to note the process of lodging tax, that the city puts together a lodging tax advisory committee. And the, the committee recommends, um, awards to organizations that have applied. Uh, the city council then, um, finalizes that, but the council, um, may not award funds to any recipient that was not recommended by the lodging tax advisory committee. So, um, you know, lodging tax is an option, um, but there are limitations to it. And then kind of just broke down what, what all of this means altogether. All of this narrative is that the, um, the city would likely be ineligible for lodging tax grants for city staff costs for an event hosted by another organization. Um, an organization could include its own costs for security, emergency services and other public works items in its, um, event budget. And those costs would be paid by the host organization and then would be eligible for, um, uh, lodging tax grant to go towards those. Um, but the lodging tax grant is not guaranteed. The lodging tax committee could exclude an organization if it's, if it wasn't listed in its, um, recommendations. So wanted to just present three potential, um, options for the council moving forward. The first option is to charge organizations for city costs associated with special events and then encourage those organizations to seek additional lodging tax grants from Cedar Woolley, Burlington, Skagit County. The second, um, option is to require organizations to hire for necessary security, emergency services and public works needs, hire that them, themselves. That would require changes to the code for that. And the third option is the city continue to provide the services and continue not charging for events hosted, um, for events that, that incur city, city costs. That would also require a change to the code. And then a couple last items just for council to consider. That, um, as I noted, lodging tax, R C W, doesn't specifically address the city costs for an event that the city did not host. Um, we reached out to M R S C, which is a, is a really great resource for governments, um, to get some guidance. Hopefully kind of a yes or no answer whether we, we could apply. We haven't heard back from them yet, so whenever we do, we will provide that information to council. Um, we also provided some numbers similar to what we've provided before about the estimated overtime cost and then the regular straight time costs for some of these events. Um, and included a breakdown of what we've historically received for lodging tax in the past. Um, it is up, especially with our, uh, you know, some of that is our new hotel. It is up and the projection for the amount of lodging tax we'll receive has gone up. Um, so I've included that information as well.
I have a quick question, Kelly, something that just occurred to me. So talking about, um, the hiring and whatnot, actually, um, two things, just for clarification. So if the, um, chamber wants to host a big event and they need to hire help for it, then they need to figure the cost into the lodging tax and it would be included in there so that they could be reimbursed for that cost? Is that correct?
Um, organizations submit applications and a breakdown of their costs that they would, that they're applying for. So whatever cost they would ask, if, if they got approved, um, whatever, we would only approve things that were, that were listed in their application. So it would need to be in their application and then approved by the committee, approved by council.
So how would that work then if, because, um, the discussion that we had with the council had to do with the overtime, not the straight time, but the overtime that is in, that's incurred because of, um, uh, some of our bigger events. So is there a possibility that any one of those larger events could say calculate the cost of what it would be to pay for the overtime of staff? Is that possible? Can that be done? So we would still pay the straight time, but whatever overtime there was, they could calculate that in?
Yeah, we, we, they would have to get an estimate from the city of how much it, it would cost. Um, and then they, yes, they could put that in their budget. In that scenario, the city would have to charge them for the overtime. They would pay the city for the overtime. And then they would submit their, um, their end-of-event reimbursement, uh, application. And then the lodging tax fund would reimburse the organization.
So there is a possibility then that the city could, in effect, be reimbursed? partially for overtime through these organizations?
If, if you put the cost on the organization, the organization would pay the city back in full. And then on the backside, if the organization received the lodging tax grant and it cover, you know, covered that cost, then the organization would be paid back by lodging tax.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. And thank you for being so patient, Councilwoman Kestie. I know you have a question. Go ahead.
Thanks. What I like about this is the, you know, out-of-the-box thinking, and I really love that. I know that for the hotel motel tax, when you're applying for it, that you have to put the money up. And a lot of these smaller groups don't have that kind of leverage to put out and then be reimbursed back. So I have a, a worry of that, but I like the way that you're thinking to put that in there. I would be forward that we haven't been charging so far. There is a little that we have to offer in the way of huge events that really are like the heart of Woolly, like Lager Rodeo being one of them, the Christmas Parade being another. And I think it's something that we can give back. And I think that with careful planning and, and spending, we haven't needed it thus far. I would continue the course that way. That's just my two cents.
And I'll start with Councilwoman Cock this time, just kind of changing it up here a bit.
Yes, you know, thank you for your work on this, Kelly. It's, the legal, the legal aspect of it seems murky at best. But I think philosophically, I, I'm of the opinion, and I agree with Councilwoman Kestie, that, you know, we've never charged for these events, for, if the major ones like Lager Rodeo. And I have a real hard time, I mean, these are, a lot of these organizations are run largely on volunteer labor. They don't have a ton of money. And, and on the one hand, I understand the aspect of trying to recoup our money. But I'm not a big fan of charging these organizations for it. However, if there was a way, I, I'm still not clear, can we separately apply? I don't want to put it on the organizations. Can we separately apply for the city? I, is that where it gets murky legally, that we just can't say, okay, here's our overtime, we're going to take that money out? Is that the interpretation?
Well, I'll answer that in two parts. The first part is that we couldn't do that outside of the lodging tax advisory committee. So the city, just like any other organization, we would need to apply, which we have done for other things. We would need to apply and then be awarded it through the lodging tax advisory committee. Council would then need to approve it and then we could be reimbursed. That is assuming that we are allowed to be reimbursed for costs of an event that we did not host.
Okay, that, that's where another question of mine comes in. And I know Nikki brought up the whole i- issue of giving, of, of government resources. However, could we bypass that by being a co-sponsor, like of Lager Rodeo? Then we're partially running it and we, we could pull off a little money for us, for, for police and say, hey, won't cost you Lager Rodeo or Blast from the Past or the Christmas Parade a penny? You don't even have to fill out anything. We'll do it.
We haven't done that in the past because of the liability of hosting the event. So if, if I could channel Nikki, I would guess that her, her advice would be not to be the co-host of the event for that reason, especially because we, you know, we are not putting it on. Although our staff are involved, they are the, the true hosts. So for liability reasons, we don't want to be the co-host in name only, just for this, just for these fees.
I get it. But I, I just, I have to get back to, I don't want to charge these organizations. We haven't done it to date. I think it sets a sort of bad precedent. I do worry, on a separate topic, on the stress the fourth events do place on our city staff, streets, police, and I, I worry about that. When I was at Western Washington University, we did a lot of sharing with the city of Bellingham, including police. Is there any way, Dan, we could, like, maybe help out Burlington on Berry Dairy Days? And they could help us out on the fourth or something?
It's possible, but they're probably, we want to be paid for it. And we'd have to pay for their services and vice versa, because I think it runs into the same, same situation of gifting of funds. So a lot of the venues, like you see around, like any type of marathons going on, they have a bunch of volunteers. And then they'll hot, they'll hire police officers to lead the, the run or be at some intersections, that kind of thing. So there's lots of events like that. If you look at other agencies, that's kind of what they do. So Burlington has their own. They've never asked us for help. I think our Lager Rodeo is a little bit bigger than what, what they deal with as well. So a little bit different.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman LaVaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I do have a question for you, Chief. Do you, the officers enjoy the overtime? I, I would imagine, like, hey, I get a bump on my check, it's a couple thousand bucks mixed up between them. Are they, are they in favor of it? Is it, is it something that, or is it something that is a hassle to them? And they're like, man, I gotta do overtime again?
I don't want to be a Debbie Downer, but yeah, Fourth of July is, is something that we are all hands on deck in Lager Rodeo. So yes, some people may enjoy the overtime, but also people enjoy their time off too. So that's just all hands on deck. I'm just being straight up honest with you. It's, it's all hands on deck and it's, we're staffed over, over the initial amount for that whole week, because it's just a busy week.
So the cost of overtime on a, on a police officer is going to be, it seems like more than if we were to get hired services that would come in and help support that almost. So I wonder if that's an option. There are the, you know, security guards that you can hire on for certain events or certain times to even have it your business continuously. I, I do know that. I do see that the, the, obviously the lodging tax is doubling. That's kind of cool. So that's actually going to increase quite a bit if it's doubling what had been there. And now we're going to see, you know, that additional amount, which looks like we're getting about $4,000 a month in addition on top of that, what we were getting. So I would almost want to find a way for the base four events that we have, Lager Rodeo, the Blast from the Past, the Veterans Parade, and then the Christmas Parade. And those four ones, and then somehow get that into the mix with an application process through the lodging tax to get those paid for somehow with the overtime. I think that would be cool. If there's a way to get hired services to support police officers who want the overtime, that would be great. I'd hate to have people working every Fourth of July, all hands on deck, never get a chance to leave town, go camping, enjoy fireworks. And we got to be respectful of that too. And you guys have been doing a great job all these years, but I don't think anybody's really considered, like, you know, what you give up for that entire, because you're all night chasing down fireworks right after the parade and stuff. So it's not like you, oh yeah, we did a parade, now we can all go rest, right? So something, something to think about that I would be in favor of.
Okay, thank you. Lieutenant Sarsal, I don't know if you wanted to add to that? I could see your head nodding. I didn't know if you were thinking of, yeah?
Chief McElroy, hit on all the points that, that I would have mentioned. Berry Dairy Days, I wouldn't say that that would be an equal swap to swap staff. It would be nice if it were, but it's a much, much smaller event in comparison to Lager Rodeo. And the overtime, guys do like a certain amount of overtime when it fits well on their schedule. And maybe, you know, it isn't time that they would also like to have off. But I, I think with the fourth, there is a certain level of fatigue that comes with that. Maybe the first year it's fun, the second year it's fun. And after a while, it maybe makes that, that switch for this, for people. And this year, we also unfortunately had a very large incident that followed the day after that that required a lot of man-hours. And so we had folks that were already drained from working days of overtime going into the fourth and now having a major incident on the fifth, even a greater level of fatigue. And then also that caused additional overtime and put a lot of officers also into double time when we did have that next event that happened.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. So we're looking at about, part of the discussion is the straight time, which would be considered during their normal working hours, putting stuff out, public works, putting trash cans out, stuff like that. I, I mean, I, I don't, I don't really see that really needing to be in the cost discussion at all if they're already at work doing work. You know, that, our, our people cost what they cost, right? We're, we're all on salary at the city. Of course, some are hourly, some are exempt, but if you're at work doing work, I don't, and it's, happens to be during the, during these festivals, I don't, I don't think that should even be part of the discussion. I think that tho- those line items should disappear and go back to just what we're talking about, which would be the overtime cost. And we've never charged for this before. I wish this would never have come up because now it opens the door for, say, I want to, I want to have my own event down at the park for two weeks during the summer and it's a, you know, RC plane racing event and we need, you know, fire department standing by at all times and all this other stuff, and the overtime for that's going to be, you know, $200,000, right? Well, I still want to have my event and, and now, now the door's been opened up for, for this, you know? And it, it's, it's really too bad because these are massive economic driving events for our town. If we didn't have these events in our town, it, it'd just about wipe us off the map as far as, as far as revenues go, especially during the summer. So I'm, I'm totally for not charging what we previously hadn't charged in our entire history. I want to make sure that in the writing or rewriting of this ordinance, we're not, we're not opening ourselves up for liability. If, if you know what I, from that example, I mean, there could be many other examples. The other thing I keep getting asked about from people associated with the school district is what about our, what about our kids' parade, you know, if like the Little League One state or whatever? And, and we have had those parades downtown in the past too, is, are they going to be able to have, are we going to be charging, you know, a Little League team $800 to have extra police there and a road closed and, and all those other things? And I, I keep getting asked a lot of what ifs, so. But charging $18,000 to Lager Rodeo for overtime, how are, how are they going to be able to put their event on? And the lodging tax conversation is very, very tricky. We use that in Burlington all the time, but we have a very, a very special way that we do it, where the city is actually putting these events on. We have an entire recreation department with nine people in it. They're, they're very expensive, but they're, they're getting a lot of lodging tax dollars to be able to put events on at a park that the city owns and the people down at the park, working at the park, are operating a, the facility, which it states in the RCW. So it, it checks all the boxes in a very roundabout way. I would love for us to be able to go with the, with the, don't do what we've never done in the first place, foot first. And if the city can recoup some of the costs through lodging tax, all the better.
Councilwoman Kestie?
Thank you. I just have a question as far as like events are concerned. When there's a football game or a basketball game or a wrestling match and we see like the people are down there, how do we pay them for that? Or how do they pay us? How does that work?
We bill them for that time.
Okay.
Just curious. Mayor, can I answer a couple of Councilmember Henderson's questions?
You bet.
One of them was regarding the taxes and the, the revenue that comes in from these special events. And I had this question come up from a council member this afternoon. So I sent, I sent all of you an email with the answer to that question. But I, I sent it at 3:30 today, so you may not have seen it in that, in that window. But we do have the data for sales tax by month. So we receive sales tax from the state once a month in a lump sum. So we don't have the data for individual businesses. But we do have the monthly totals by month. And one thing when you look at the data is it's two months delayed. So any sales collected in July will be remitted to the city in the September amount. When we look at it, we don't see a significant spike in the July sales that we receive in September. Typically, the July through December, sales tax is a little bit higher than it is for the first part of the year. But there's no significant spike in September indicating that we see a large spike in sales. Other thing to note is that the percentage of money we receive from the, like, sales tax related to that, we would have to have a huge spike, you know, one and a half million dollars increase in sales to, to recover $18,000, $20,000 of staff costs. So that's just the financial side of it. I know internally, and, and the council has talked a lot about the non-economic, economic benefit of these events. So, you know, that we can't put into numbers, but that, that, what we can, we have provided to council. And I'm happy to post that as well if, if you would like, just so that that's included in this packet information.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Kelly, I think there's a lot more as far as just like team spirit, morale that goes on within the community when they come together to put on a parade. We probably won't see the return with like $18,000 just in taxes or what the Lager Rodeo puts in, in revenue generated in taxes into our pockets. But I think that what it does is it creates just that whole love of Sejowoli, right? It shows people that we're a unified town, we're a community, we care about each other. We have a lot of fun in these parades and stuff. And I think, I think that's where a lot of this comes from. It steers from not so much the cost and recouping the cost, but the acceptance that, yeah, even with that cost, coming together and marching down the street over the Christmas tree as it's lit up and, and that kind of stuff. It's seeing tens of thousands of people lined up on the streets, you know? And it's, it's really a lot of fun. So I think that's, that's the importance of keeping it going. We probably won't recoup it with necessary taxes, but it does throughout the year keep everybody's spirits alive. One last thing. I do want to note on the security forces, there is ones that you can rent. Obviously, they would want to have to make a good connection. There's armed and unarmed locally to Seattle and Kent. The challenge is that, we all know, this is the least police state in the Union and we've quickly become the most dangerous state. Thank God our community is really quite safe and, and actually it feels really good thanks to you guys and also thanks to the community members, right? But it, it is a challenge to just like exchange police officers. So I think the go-to would probably be seeing about, you know, getting 10 or 15. They're $25 to $45 an hour unarmed, or they could be up to $200 an hour armed. But when you're looking at overtime, and so I don't know that we'd want to rent armed guards. If we're having somebody steer traffic and using our police force that has arms, that would be something I would be more into.
Thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
Oh, I was just going to mention when you were talking about sales tax revenue, some of the things that I've heard back
Oh, I was just gonna mention when you were talking about sales tax revenue, some of the things that I've heard back from business, some of the businesses there is, you know, Lager Rodeo really kinda depends on the, on the day of the week that it falls on, right? So, a lot of businesses are going to close or close early on the third and the fourth. You'll see restaurants open, maybe a couple of the places open, but a lot of times the small shops are closing because they're spending their time with their families. So, we're not gonna see huge increases in sales tax revenue unless there's stuff going on around the days around that, leading up to it, and bringing people in on those days. Christmas parade is generally in the evening, there's stuff going on in the middle of the day for a few hours, but it's, it's people coming in to utilize some of that stuff in the middle of town, you're shutting down the street. And so, there, actually, several of the businesses have told me that they actually lose business on those days, and especially during Blast from the Past, because nobody can park and come into their stores. And for Blast from the Past, the vendors that are brought in don't coincide with the same kind of clientele that would be coming into their stores. So, if we're looking at it from a big picture, from a, a chamber perspective, bringing business into the community, we need to look at upscaling the businesses and the, the mobile vendors that are coming in to reach the markets that are gonna bring people in, and then offset into their traffic and into the stores as well. But, right now, I don't know that that's being looked at, the vendors that are going through don't coincide with the businesses that are there, and some of the businesses have just opted to reduce their hours or shut their doors during those days, because they're not getting their traffic. And it's not paying for their hours, it's not paying for, you know, they would love to stay open for the community, but they're just not, they're not seeing it beneficial for the day, and it's cheaper for them to give the day off to their employee than to pay them. Just some feedback from, from that stance, but from the perspective of what it gives back to the community, especially the Christmas parade and Lager Rodeo, is, you know, it gives the community a sense of hope and joy and something to look forward, and brings people together. And so, I definitely don't want to go out and charge these entities for something that they may not be able to afford. So, if we are able to build that into costs and future budgets, as we've been doing over the years, for the overtime, straight time, I mean, that, that's the cost of people, and that's the cost of, of our day-to-day business. And so, I really, I mean, if that event wasn't happening, we'd still be paying people. So, I mean, that's a city cost, not an overtime cost. But, we really should be looking at ways, I, I think that we need to try to avoid charging them for those. And maybe we look at grandfathering a couple of these events into, and then looking to the, if somebody's looking to create a future event, like Councilmember Henderson mentioned, we want to avoid something like that coming forward in the future, that we, you know, moving forward on such-and-such date, exempt from, you know, these four events, whatever that might be, we can outline that moving forward, so that we've grandfathered in, I mean, you come into town and it says, "Home of Lager Rodeo", I mean, how, it'd be really hard to try to take that away from the city, and from, you know, from the community. And I surely don't wanna be a, a part of doing that. And the other thing that has Councilman Henderson also mentioned is that people approaching him regarding how it was going to affect Little League parades and those sorts of things. I've been approached by people in regards to high school, so with short notice, and so, the softball team wins state, they have a parade through town, it requires, maybe, maybe there's a fire truck and a police officer or whatever, I mean, minimal. We usually jump to make that happen, but in the way that it was written, that would no longer be acceptable. We wanna avoid that, we wanna still have that community feel and that community touch, and be able to support the schools and the kids, and keep that relationship between the first responders and, and the community, and keep those, those faces and those, those lives active and connected, and kind of just supporting each other through all of that. And so, I just, I wanna make sure that however we look at doing this, we don't pigeonhole situations, and that we're, we're still able, as a city, to support the entities that bring in a community and support our youth as well.
Okay. Councilman Cock?
Yeah, I, I agree with a lot of the sentiment, I think the Lager Rodeo and others, the other three main events, I don't think we should be charging them anything right now. However, I do, I do note the pressures and stress on our city workers, including police, streets, fire, and I think we have to look for some kind of solutions to that. I also would like to somehow try to recoup at least the overtime. It said here that, and it's up there, too, we've reached out to the MRSC for additional guidance. I mean, what is the, I, I, I know, I'm sort of going contrary to sort of the legal information here, I, I would be interested in the, any ability for the city to go to the Lodging Tax Committee, whatever it's called, and request the overtime money, so we don't have to involve the organizations. That would be my hope. I, I, I don't know if we can get away with it legally, but if we can, I, that's where I would go. Otherwise, I think you, I don't know if you have to create a, you know, budget line for the overtime, but you, you have to expect to pay it for those four. I do sort of like the grandfathering idea for the four major events. So, if somebody else, another large organization comes, well, they're new, and hey, you know, we're, we're stretched on the four major ones we have, we can't do much more, and if you're gonna require overtime, we'll have to request that you pay for it.
Okay.
I just had one more question, I'm not sure if this is even, obviously, it wouldn't be necessarily for this, but with Blast from the Past, is there something where if the cars were to do a loop around, just, as somebody was mentioning, Cartel Lane does it in Porta Lane, right, they have all the cars and they're just driving in loops for a while, that would probably add additional cost for traffic control and all that stuff, I would imagine. So, it'd increase costs, if they did were, were to like create a loop around town and then, you know, at some point, make it more elaborate in an event?
I, I would assume so, our, our staffing for that event is very minor, 'cause it's all blocked off roads.
So, Kelly, I don't know if this helps at all, do you have other questions, or do you need further direction?
So, what I'm hearing from the council is going with option three, which is to, the city continue to provide the services and not charge event, not charge the host for city staff time, which would require a change to the municipal code, so bringing back a draft change to the municipal code. That's the consensus I heard from the council.
Is that good with the council?
At all events, or are we looking at just the, the four main events, or are we just pulling it from events altogether?
I think it would be challenging to call out specific events, only because, you know, either you say, "Community events are beneficial to the community, and therefore, we're not, we're not charging them", but calling out specific events, I think, could be more of a appearance of like gifting public funds to those specific events. But, you know, we, we could follow up with Nikki for her legal opinion on that topic.
Yeah, if an event's been active for 10 years, minus COVID, of course, then that event would maybe fall on the line to say, okay, let's look at that. So, 10 years previously from the time of now, or whenever, those would be the ones that we could look at. Because, I mean, otherwise, what are we looking at, an event every weekend, that's force a lot. I mean, it really, you want that, it's even biblical, they always had like some celebration, it was just breaking up the monotony of life and, and work and stuff, so you do wanna have celebrations, but, I don't know.
Councilwoman Kestie?
Thank you. I was wondering if the verbiage of like a, a city sanctioned event where we are not co-hosting, but it's something that we are a part of, that, if there's some sort of verbiage, so that it could be obviously Lager Rodeo, obviously the Christmas parade, and then, you know, the others, do what you will, but I was just trying, the verbiage meaning that we're a part of this.
I'm, I'm sure we, we could do something like that, although that might be a difference without a true distinction, that it would be seen as kind of the, the same thing. And my only real question with all of this is, is there any true events that, you know, if, if we just like blatantly say, "No events", we, we don't, we're not charging for costs for special events, like, is there really any special events that we would want to charge? You know, if, if we make the rule, if we make a rule, you know, we don't want it to be too complex, or we say, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna charge for these four events, but we're also not gonna charge for the school district, school district events. You know, it's like, what, what's really left, you know? Like, if we don't include the, in those four events, the Veterans Parade, are we gonna charge the Veterans Parade? So, the, the other thing to note is that special events do go through the special events permit process, so that if, we, we probably would not approve an event that is two weeks at the Riverfront Park. We, we likely wouldn't approve that event to say that our park is not gonna be open for general park use for, for two weeks. You know, those sorts of newer events that are on city property and, or in, on city, the city street, we have a little bit of control over which ones we approve and don't approve, if they are overtaxing our city resources.
And we need to be careful about lawsuits, we don't want to appear to be discriminating. So, if PFLAG decides that they wanna do an event, which they've done a couple of those, or, you know, any of those, and we want to make sure that we are inclusive when we do that, so, yeah. So, the language would be a very tough thing, it'd be interesting to see what MRSC, kinda going back to your MRSC, to see what they say about the opportunity for us to be reimbursed through lodging tax for overtime. That would be great, hopefully, we'll get good news on that. You have one more thing?
I just had one quick question, 'cause you mentioned that the, like, for the football games or basketball games, that then it, the school district is billed. Is the school district billed for the little parades and guidance through town that they have as well?
Oh, not currently.
Okay.
But, we do bill them for football games, and I think dances, like prom and homecoming.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's not many, it's, it's generally football games where they really want an officer presence, and then sometimes at the basketball games, the officer will stop by on duty and just check it out, that kind of thing, say hi. And then dances, and graduation is a big one, too.
Councilman Cock, did you have another question, or was your light?
Oh, I'm sorry, no. I, I just think the key is to look, oh, look for a way to get the overtime reimbursed through the tourism fund, and then, I guess, not charged, so. I like the grandfather, but if that's gonna be a preferential treatment, maybe, I guess we can't do that. Wouldn't, it'd be worth at least asking Nikki that if we could say, can a, like, Councilwoman Kestie said, could we say, use some kind of language that says they're a little different than the other newer people that might come up?
Councilwoman Kestie, do you have another?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, because this is a really big task in finding the verbiage to skirt around things, so we can do it the woolly way, if you will, to make sure our veterans are taking care of the kids and our Lager Rodeo and Christmas parade, so, good luck.
Okay, well, anything else, Kelly? Okay, with that, then, it is 7:23, and we are gonna move on to item G, public comments. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less, because state law prohibits use of facilities for the purpose of supporting and opposing campaigns or ballots, or, so we respectfully request that the public keep the comments to things that matter, so. Thank you. So, we actually do, we have Mike Cullen from the school district. Good evening, Mike.
Hi, everybody. I'm ironically here about the whole conversation you had, and just trying to find clarity on our little Veterans Day parade, it might not be in your top 10.
I think you wanna make sure your, yeah, mic is on.
It is on, I think.
It's on?
There should be a blue light.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Anyhow, I was just trying to get clarity, if we have to pay for our Veterans Day parade, how much that's gonna cost us, and I'm hoping that can get weighed. But, thank you for helping us, 'cause we have a great partnership with the, with the city, so, if we do have to pay, we're gonna need to know soon to budget that, so.
So, I do think, we did see your email come in, and we did have discussion, I don't know, Charlie, if you had a chance to do a response?
Yeah, we've responded, and we just let them know there was a meeting tonight, and we're having this discussion tonight. And I think based on the council conversation and what we're gonna bring back, you know, we would, would not be charging.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you, that's it?
Yeah, thank you.
That's great.
Okay. All right, anybody else with public comment?
Philip Murray. You're having a discussion about business licenses for rentals, kinda seems like you should stay out of other people's business. I want to know, what is the smallest house you can build? It's like 10 by 10 and rent it out, and you can build a 10,000 square foot house and rent bedrooms out, and you're still paying the same business tax, and it's, it's, people are already paying income tax on that. So, and property tax, they don't need another tax from the city, you taxed us to death. And, uh, that's about all I have to say on that right now, but, uh, what was up with the signage for the state street? Traffic was going everywhere, cars were going back and forth in front of my place, there was at least five, six cars at a time on it.
Are you talking about today?
Yes, I know they're doing construction, but who was in charge of the signage? People were lost, they put cones out on Rita Street, so when you're leaving Ferry Street to Rita Street, they'd take, they'd go up by me on Woodworth, and then onto Eastern Avenue, which is not a public street, and then go into the library through the exit only, which the library doesn't even have a legal access from Eastern Avenue into their parking lot, and they're going back and forth through there, two cars on a 17-foot wide pavement. That isn't even a legal size for two lanes, is it? You guys should know. Anyway, it was absolutely ridiculous, so I coned it off, and I talked to a few people out there, a little angry. Police were called, thank you. Unfortunately, they opened it up, and I moved the cones by the time the police got there, but I didn't care, I'll get arrested, whatever, quit sending cars through there, it's not your property. It's ridiculous, the, the library has no legal access through railroad right-of-way to get to that. It's a dead-end private spur, it's not the city's property. Now, please do something about it, thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Okay, hearing none, I will close public comment, it is 7:27. Great discussion tonight, wanna thank everybody for their thoughtful comments, I think it was very helpful giving the city direction. And if there is nothing else, have a good night, we are adjourned.